We're going to be one minute, probably. Two people dropped out today. Buttigieg. It's not that hard. Buttigieg. You've just got to watch MSNBC for a couple of minutes. Buttigieg. Buttigieg.
We're just showing off.
Yeah. So, somebody wants to be a running mate, you know? Just waiting for that election discussion to end over there. Okay, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, unnationed, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to please have a moment of silence for the following: Patrick O'Day, a graduate of the North Syracuse Central School District, and Christine Luckett, a former employee of the North Syracuse Central School District. Thank you. Okay, we have a budget update. Mr.?
Good evening. So, I think as indicated in the agenda that our first priority is to look at the tax cap, and I think I explained to the to the board when I last presented that we were waiting on just a few pieces of information to finalize the tax cap. And we not only did that, but we also filed it with the Controller's Office last week in advance of their deadline of March 1st. So, what you have in front of you is a slightly modified tax cap, and I want to just take one moment to explain this number right here. The $424,000 of estimated pilot revenue. We work with our attorneys to review all these pilot agreements. And as you probably know, these pilot agreements are, the district is, while we're not a direct party to the pilot agreement, pilot agreements that are agreed to by the local municipalities have implications on North Syracuse. And so, we review those contracts every year. Our attorneys completed that review, and we saw an increase in the amount of pilots. And that actually represents a reduction in our tax cap. And so, let me explain that for a minute. If you're getting pilot revenue from a source, then you shouldn't be able to levy to cover that location as well. So, you might remember our tax cap was at 2.56. It's now, I'm sorry, was that 2.6? Now, it's down to 2.56. Not a very material change in the tax levy. We also had one other small adjustment in our tax levy for capital, and the board probably remembers well that BOSI's purchased the Crown Road facility. And since BOSI's did that, and they got taxpayer approval, and there is a tax levy associated with that, we had to adjust our tax levy for capital. It ended up being, for us, a net increase in that tax levy for capital of about $4,500. Not a lot of money. So, these are minor adjustments. I believe that they are the final adjustments we'll be making to the tax cap. So, we are at 2.56 at this point. And again, this is what we filed with the Controller's Office. So, I wanted to take a look at the overall revenues one more time quickly. And just point out that while our pilot revenues went up, which reduced our tax levy, we get the benefit in our revenues. You see there in the pilot line item, second line item down, that our revenues are up $45,000, the amount of the change in the pilot revenue. So, the net impact is, you know, really not material at all. Our overall revenues are about the same as they were prior to this adjustment. But continuing with the theme of revenues, I thought it was important to perhaps talk a little bit about the foundation aid. And so, if you'd humor me, this is this messy chart up here. One of the things we do here at North Syracuse is we try to benchmark ourselves. Part of understanding ourselves better is trying to understand other school districts around the state. And while we try to compare ourselves, and you guys know we do this, we compare ourselves to the other districts in our BOSI's, one of the things we've done over the last several years is compared ourselves to our peers around the state. And so, who are our peers? Our peers are large suburban school districts with comparable enrollments. I'm saying comparable enrollments. These are enrollments anywhere from 5,000 to 10,000 students with a similar wealth ratio. Wealth ratios, you know, our wealth ratio is .625, but, you know, wealth ratio is under 1. And so, this is 15 districts around the state, and what it shows you is a couple of things. So, it's busy. The number on the top of the bar is the wealth ratio. So, the average wealth ratio for our peer group, these 15 districts, these are districts that are in the Buffalo-Rochester area, on Long Island, here, right here in central New York. You can imagine who the big ones are here in central New York that are represented, the eastern part of the state. The wealth ratio for all of these is a .768. So, in our peer group, we're a little, not quite as wealthy as the rest of those groups. You'll notice a line across the bottom called "Foundation Aid Shortfall." And I think what I hope to point out is that those numbers are all over the place. And what that emphasizes is that there's no rhyme or reason to why we've been shorted, the amount we've been shorted. So, you see that North Syracuse has been shorted 17.9% of our foundation aid. The range is, districts is up to 37.5%, and that one, the second one from the right, that makes sense. You might say, "Well, you know, they're a large district like us, but they have a higher wealth ratio. Maybe they should be shorted more." I don't know. I'm not sure I believe that, but that's one thing that you might conclude. There are other districts that are as low as 9.5 and 9.6, 9.7, you know, very low percentages in terms of their shortfall. So, we looked at this data, and we said, "Well, how else can we slice this and look at it a little bit differently?" And so, before I show you that data, which may be a chart even more confusing, but just bear with me, one of the things that kind of has hit us as we've talked about foundation aid is if the state is short and doesn't have enough money to cover foundation aid for everybody, shouldn't all the schools' percentage of shortage be the same? In other words, if we can't pay everybody, let's at least do it fairly. Everybody's going to get 80% of their foundation aid or 90% of their foundation aid, whatever that number is. But we're not seeing that shortfall as a consistent percentage. Another argument might be, "Well, hey, if you're short, maybe you should give the lesser wealth districts a higher percentage." We're not seeing that either. There seems to be no correlation between wealth and funding and the overall state of the state economy. So, this chart takes that same data but does something a little different with it. Now, so this is a two-axis chart. So, the orange numbers on the left are that combined wealth ratio that we often talk about, and the blue numbers on the right are the percentage of foundation aid. And when I showed this chart to John Carulla and Dan Bowles, they're both like, "Don, you're killing us here. We can't follow this. There's too many numbers." And so, I put the numbers on top of the columns, and I put, so you can see, so North Syracuse is the second column. We also sorted this left to right by wealth. So, as you move to the right, the school district is more wealthy. So, I want to emphasize again, North Syracuse being here, that we're funded at 82%. A neighbor of ours, very close neighbor, very similar to us, is funded at 90.4%. If we were funded at the same percentage as that neighbor, we would have no deficit right now. And there are five districts in this chart, all wealthier than us, that are getting a higher percentage of their foundation aid. And so, I'm happy to inform you, if you didn't know already, that NICEID has told us that this is one of their key objectives. And John Carulla is out in Albany this week talking to our legislators. Dan sent a letter recently to our legislators. We're hoping that we can really push this issue. We understand that maybe we can't get 100%. 100% for us would be over $10 million more. We'd be very happy with that. But geez, if we could at least get more foundation aid, more comparable to other districts that are similar to us in this profile, but actually wealthier than us, you know, you'd think they wouldn't get as much foundation aid as they do, or certainly not more as a percentage of their foundation aid than we do. And so, I just wanted to share that with you. This is the same data, just showing you the percentages. So, that's a little revenue update. We don't have much more to report than that. We anxiously are following any deliberations going on out in Albany, hoping that, you know, that the legislature will work with the governor to get school districts, particularly North Syracuse, more aid as the budget's finalized, and hopefully on time by April 1st. Any questions or thoughts on any of the information that I just presented?
So, can you just go over again what the wealth factor is based on? Is that just?
Sure, great. That's a great question. So, combined wealth ratio looks at the property value wealth and the income wealth. So, it says, let's look at, because, you know, around the state, properties are worth different amounts, and so are the income that people make. So, it's a factor that combines both property wealth and income, and it's called the combined wealth ratio. And it's actually the preferred measure when comparing the economic status of districts.
Also, you know, they're going to be doing the census again, and we're hearing that is extremely important. Be counted for your district to make sure we get enough aid.
Yep. We've heard that as well, and, you know, I have to confess to you that I'm not fully appraised on exactly how the census would affect our state aid, but certainly, you know, making sure that we have accurate representation. I think it's a big issue, too, in terms of our overall state representation in the federal government, but yes.
Can you go back to the revenue screen?
Sure, sure. I'm sorry, this slide.
Explain, like, what is the interest?
Oh, sure, sure. So, if you don't mind, I'll go top to bottom real quick. So, general state aid is all of our non-building-related aid. So, it includes foundation aid and transportation aid and BOSI's aid. And one of the big ones that's really been moving a lot for us is excess cost aid for our special ed population. It includes library, textbook, you know, all those aids like that. So, that's all of our aid that's going to directly fund program, whereas down here, this building aid is the aid associated with the various building projects we have. Pilots, as we talked about, those are payment in lieu of tax agreements, and those are revenues received directly by municipalities and schools in lieu of the local taxes. Sales tax, as you guys all know, we have a sales tax sharing agreement where the district gets sales tax. This one's kind of a rough estimate. That one might change a little bit as we come down the home stretch. And by the way, I hope general state aid changes as well, goes up if we get more aid. But our sales tax, we'll take another close look at that again right before we finalize the budget. Interest is the same thing. We are investing. The board approved recently a policy change in our investment strategy, and we are continuing to invest any excess funds that we have available, although I have to tell you, rates aren't great. We hope to at least get $200,000 in interest. Again, that's another one. We might fine tune a little bit. And part of that is just looking, budgets are tricky, and if I could just interject this. I had this conversation with somebody recently. We're sitting here in March, trying to put a budget together that's going to start in July, but really for a school year that starts in September of '20. So, we're pretty far out from the budget time period. And so, there are a couple of these line items. We really try to look at as close toward the budget as possible. And you might remember, last year, we tweaked our Medicaid, and we tweaked a couple of these line items as we came down the home stretch, and we'll do the same thing. Rent is predominantly the rent when we rent our facilities to BOSI's, and that's the lion's share of that. Medicaid, that's another area, you know, just like our excess cost aid and the stacking of our students that we've talked about, Medicaid is another thing. We use a BOSI's billing service for Medicaid, and they do an amazing job for us. They are emailing us regularly, asking us to get consent forms from parents, and making sure we're doing everything possible so that we don't leave any Medicaid money on the table. And we're real happy with that service. But that's another one we've done particularly well with, and we'll take another look at that. But when I say we'll take a look, it's probably not going to go from $450,000 to $900,000, but it could certainly go from $450,000 to $500,000, you know, between now and the time the budget's finalized. Other revenue is just everything else. It's a mishmash of other things, including inter-fund transfers. So, when we transfer money from other funds, whether it be the debt service fund or other funds that we would bring money in from, that gets caught in that bucket as well. And then, the tax levy is, as I said, the 2.56% increase that we talked about.
And so, I mean, they're even numbers. So, are those our estimates that, do you round down or round?
Yeah, that's a great, great question. They are, in fact, estimates. And one of the reasons, I'm kind of a stickler for making sure as best as possible that when it's an estimate, that I, you know, especially when it's a million-dollar estimate or a six-figure estimate, that I'm putting zero, zero at the end so that people know. We're just doing the best we can to take a swag at that. And so, they're estimates, yeah.
Because I know the sales tax that we got for last year was $312,000 and change.
Yep. So, we did round that down, and we'll take a good look at that this year. And I think with the economy being as strong as it has been, I would think sales tax would be one of the numbers that would move up, right? I mean, we've had a good, you know, a lot of consumer spending, so. Oh, I know. I think the number was, in the day, $2 million. I think that might have been the day, in the peak.
That day's gone.
Yeah, those days are gone.
Our share of that day is gone, I can tell you that.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes. The interest number remaining flat, is that, is the interest being reinvested into?
Great question. So, let me tell you. So, our revenues are lumpy. So, we get, if you can think about it, we get our, we put our school tax bills out. Everybody pays our school taxes. All of a sudden, we're flushed with cash. And so, at that moment in time, we invest the money. And then, we get our state aid payments several times during the year, and when those come in, we're flushed with money. So, what ends up happening is, as the school year goes on, you know, it's like riches to rags. We spend all the money. We just spend it all in the course of the year. So, we don't have a lot of money that rolls. We just have our reserves and our fund balance that rolls over. And yes, interest is reinvested in those. That's why you might see in our reserve funds, whatever interest we get, we roll back into the reserve funds, and they grow a little bit every year, and we keep growing it and keep it invested. But we don't, so one thing that's important to note is, as we go into this budget, particularly as you see us using fund balance, we don't anticipate that our revenues will exceed our expenditures, and therefore, any money we have is, for part of the year, is the timing due to the lumpiness of our revenues.
I hear what you're saying. Even though it's reinvested, it's because of the highs and lows that it balances out.
Any other questions or comments?
Comments, but none of them are good. This is just aggravating, but you've highlighted this over and over again. Mr. Bowles did a nice job with the letters you sent to our legislators, excuse me. To highlight this, I just would hope that they see this. I don't know if this is some of these graphs or one or two of them are something you might be interested in for the legislative meeting. I know it's tomorrow, but. I mean, that last paragraph on that one page where he said, you know, "Shouldn't we just all be getting the same percentage of our foundation aid?" Duh, to me. But, you know, we've had the same story over and over again. I wasn't at the Center New York School Board's piece. I found, but I've heard that story there also. I don't know, did it play out that way this year with the Rick Timms presentation? And then, you know, "Well, we're going to do our best. You know, this is starting with the governor's numbers," and yada, yada, yada. And they didn't do a very nice job last year, I didn't think, moving from the governor's numbers that far, so.
Very, and they're not acting on it.
And I think, you know, we've, I say "we," but maybe as an organization, we've come to terms with the fact that we're smart. We realize that New York State's got some unique economic problems and challenges. But at the end of the day, it's the lack of equity that is so disturbing. You know, kids, like North Syracuse kids, that are in, you know, in the top, these 15 school districts, we're second from the bottom in terms of wealth, and, you know, you'd think that they would try to figure out how to redistribute this a little bit, just to make it a little more fair, because it's certainly hurting our kids. I mean, can you imagine what our programs would look like, you know, if we weren't sitting here sweating over a $4.7 million deficit, you know, because as you board members know, and as Dan, I think, has conveyed, we included in the initial budget what we thought we might have a hope of getting in there. We didn't include everything that was asked for, and, Dan, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but there weren't a lot of requests that were unreasonable. You know, it wasn't like our principals are pounding the table saying, "Give me this," and we're rolling our eyes thinking, "These guys are crazy." They're making reasonable requests that we can't afford, and, you know, that's 100% due to the inequitable distribution of foundation aid.
So, as Mary pointed out, the census is being done now, and it seemed, it was mentioned in the last, in that meeting we all went to, that the census isn't calculated for years, potentially, until after the fact? We also have a neighboring school district, if the news is correct, losing students faster than we are, yet their numbers are higher. Is that, I'm sure that's been brought to someone's attention.
Yeah, and that is, because what they're doing is, with the foundation aid, the biggest piece of our aid, is they're just adjusting it up by dollar amounts. I mean, they've modified the formula this year in attempts to do things, but it feels a little bit like, you know, they're shuffling a lot of things around. You saw the governor try to put BOSI's aid and other aids into the foundation aid, which really just confuses, muddies the waters. But, yeah, so, to your point, Terry, things are happening in school districts, whether, you know, enrollment up and down, economic status up and down, that are not being properly factored into these formulas, into the distribution of foundation aid. And I think, I feel like every year we get away from that lawsuit, it gets weirder, you know, rather than better.
Looked like you were about to say something, so.
He can't.
The whole equity thing is.
He can't say what he's thinking.
Thank you, folks.
Well, the governor is, these aren't his words. I don't want to put words in his mouth, but the fiscal equity case was settled under a different governor. Governor Patterson was in charge when they developed the formula. Governor Cuomo feels, and again, this is a paraphrasing, Patterson never fully funded it, and that was his thing. So, it's a done deal. Why should I bother? That's basically his attitude. He doesn't even address it. So, anyway, thank you, Mr. Keegan. Okay. We have no one on the sign-up sheet for public comments. We're going to move to Board of Education Committee reports, and I will turn to, I don't know if there's, there aren't any since last Monday, Mrs. Scannell?
I do have. So, we don't have a policy committee update. Well, nothing new from last time. Our March meeting, we ended up, we're canceling it because we're all up to date on our review. So, our next meeting is April 14th. But I'm also part of the Anadaga-Madison School Board Association and representing our district. And we had a meeting last week, known as OMSBA, and it's chaired by the executive director of the CNY School Board Association, who Charlie retired, so that is now Derek Dorsey. And with new leadership, we talked about possibly restructuring. The other board members were asking questions of really, what is our purpose on this board? So, the bylaws were circulated and reviewed, and I have copies, photocopy. And the background of the board was discussed, and the CNY School Board Association was started out of the Anadaga-Madison School Board Association. And what they decided was that the CNY School Board Association would be, would be the board that would pursue the different. So, part of the objectives of our board is to provide permanent organizational structure through which the school boards of Anadaga-Madison counties can articulate a representative response with respect to matters impacted upon them. Encourage cooperative efforts by and among member school districts, enhance inner-board communication, and provide an organizational vehicle by which school boards' concerns can be represented in all public forum. And when it was started, the budget was huge, and it pretty much was to fund the Central New York School Board Association. It was $30,000. And in 2012, 2013, they reduced that to $6,000. And right now, they are mindful of all the budget issues that the school districts are having. So, we're looking to reduce that to 2/3, down to 2,000. And that pretty much will cover directors and officers' insurance and will allow us to still stay as an organization, because one thing we do is fight for the sales tax revenue for the district, and that comes up only once every 10 years. And it already was settled, January 1st, 2019. It was settled a year early because we had a new county executive with Ryan McMahon taking office, and we had a new mayor. So, they worked out, they renegotiated the sales tax revenue for the school districts at that time. So, it won't come up again until 2029, unless they decide to look at it early again. But pretty much, we asked, what do we do different than CNY SBA? And we don't really do much. So, we're still going to stay together as a board. We're still going to meet. We're still going to, you know, push any issues to CNY School Board Association, but we are reducing our budget to just cover the insurance. CNY SBA will work on all the lobbying issues that we push their way.
All right, thank you. Mr. Grabtree? Okay, thank you. Mr. Bowles?
Thank you. Last Friday night, we had a wonderful event at CNS, the Wall of Distinction. It was a full house. I think two of the people that had the most people in the audience was Mr. Pete Moore and Lee Turner. Excellent speeches. I do want to comment that Mr. Leahy did a wonderful job. It was his first go-around, and it was well-attended, and it was put together like there was no other, and also with Mrs. Keeley, so thank you. The other thing, last week, we sent students to Rochester for DECA. And I have to tell you, we were well-represented, and 10 out of our 15 students got awards. I wanted to mention, for hotel and lodging management, Joseph Bowen; principles and hospitality and tourism, Stephanie Quadripone, top 10; principles and hospitality, tourism, for role-play, Stephanie Quadripone, a top 10; marketing, for role-play, Katie Theis, Madeline Walker; sports and entertainment, team decision-making, Jacqueline Kupoli and Gracie Gleason; and sport and entertainment, team decision-making, also Jacqueline Kupoli and Gracie Gleason; and for business finance, Ava Field. They did an excellent job. We did end up bringing them back a night early. They got to perform all of the things that they needed to for competition. That's why they got the awards. But we had some concerns about weather, and we brought them back. But we had some concerns about weather, and we brought them back, along with Central Square and Liverpool, all brought our students back, so they didn't spend the night. So, they didn't get to be there during their awards, so I wanted to recognize them tonight. Last night, was that girls' basketball sectionals, semifinals? Mr. Crabtree was there, we, we won 57-32, great game. Girls will be playing this coming Saturday. And the last thing that I have is, last Thursday night, NICE Ed was holding a forum at Fowler High School, because they're doing this all over New York State, and trying to get a cent, what do we need to do to make changes in the graduation requirements? So, for the next two years, they're going to be holding these forums, getting information from many different groups. We had parents, we had administrators, we had community members, we had teachers, we had union leadership. So, it was a full house at Fowler last Thursday, and they're going to keep doing this for the next two years. One of the things that was mentioned in one of the groups that I was in, was just talking about, we have certain tests that are always either computer-based or pen and paper, but there are some students that may be more hands-on, some students that you can, if they had the opportunity, have something differentiated for them within the graduation requirements. So, those were things that were discussed, so that was this past week.
Okay, thank you. Any other board have had comments for the, go to the order?
OCMBOSI's annual meeting, and I'm hoping many of you go, and hopefully our superintendent, this is where we'll go over the budget for the year, and North Syracuse is in that budget, and look at our three candidates for the board. I attended something earlier yesterday with my friend, Mrs. Exner. We went to, and I want to share this for a reason, we went to Salve High School to see Beauty and the Beast, just like our high school play is coming up in two weeks, and I see West Hill did Guys and Dolls or whatever over the weekend. But why I'm mentioning that is that the gentleman that is the music instructor there at the high school, CJ Oliver, is a CNS graduate. He got hired by that school district approximately three years ago, and he's turned that program around. It is amazing, because I used to go because of something else. He has three times as many students involved in their musical programs, and he thanks North Syracuse every time for starting him in their music program. And, you're student teaching with your. I think we've got a lot of young people out there, we saw the Wall of Distinction on, on Friday night, but we've got a lot of people that graduate from this school district that are amazing. And I, that's why I wanted to bring that up, because I just think it's great, he's gone there, and he loves Salve, he loves working there, and done wonders with that program.
Thank you, Mr. Crabtree. Routine action items, if I could get a motion to take A and B together, please? Motion from Terry, seconded from Mark. A is the placement of disabled students certified by the District of CSC, and B is placement of home instruction program students by the Home Instruction Review Committee. That's before us, any discussion? Seeing none, favor? Opposed, that is carried. Can I get a motion, please, for discussion action item A? Motion from George, seconded from Mary. That is before us. If, somebody could just, I, I'm familiar with this is, but I just wanted the board to hear this, for the record, what we're doing here.
Sure.
And I think I have a follow-up question.
Sure.
Okay. So, those of you that have been on the board, you probably know our district has a long history of liking very long and elaborate titles. And whenever we have new people coming into positions, we like to take the opportunity to review those titles, make sure they're descriptive of the work, and as simple and straightforward as possible, so anyone that wants to contact the district is, knows exactly who to go to right by title. And so, we're basically, this is just a shortening of the title, that we are looking to appoint a new returning employee back into that position. So, this is our opportunity to adjust that title.
Okay, so, that one is Director of Special Ed today?
Yes. It's currently the Director of Instructional Programming for Special Education, which is a very lengthy thing to put on a placard, and, and it, and it doesn't really add much more to, to helping the community understand their role and what kind of resource they are to our students and families. So, shortening it to just Director of Special.
What we'll be doing is, we'll be talking to the other two directors, or the other two people in the, in that department, about their titles, but we just didn't want to make any changes without having a thoughtful discussion to try to make sure it makes sense.
Right, and that was my, the other two titles are what? I, one, I know one of them is even more elaborate, and then there's?
Actually, up until now, we had two Directors of Instructional Program for Special Ed.
Okay, that's what I thought.
And we have an Executive Director for Pupil Personnel Services.
Okay, okay, well, thank you. Any other questions besides mine here? None, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Designated Scoreboard sponsorship, if I can get a motion, put that before us. Motion from Terry, seconded from Mike. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And surplus of marketable and non-marketable equipment, a motion, please, put that before us. Motion from George, seconded by Terry. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
What a list. So, how, how does that work? One of our schools, Gillette Road, do we, we have lots of different schools, do we get what's needed in another school, or?
Yeah, we, we do. A, a lot of the things that, I would say that, I'm not going to say that we're pack rats or hoarders, but we hang on to stuff, and particularly, some of the stuff that is on this list, we hang on to stuff, we have, keep it in the basement of Gillette Road, we, we always put the word out, hey, we got these desks, we got these shelves, we got this, and, but eventually, we, we just get to the, where we really need to dispose of it, because we're running out of space to store some of the things, and especially when things get to be just junk, they're not worth anything, and we, we try to...
There's a piano in the basement?
What's that?
There's a piano in the basement?
No, that piano's probably not in the basement, no, but, but, you know, it, but the, we do hang on to things as long as we can, and we try to market them, auction them whenever possible. We use a, it's kind of Auctions International, and we can list things and take bids on them, but honestly, those of things, you know, we only bring it to the board when we, we realize we can't.
They were cleaning out the basement?
Well, some of, some of the things are cleaning out the basement at Gillette, yes.
Thing that isn't well-known, pianos, if you don't tune it every six months, it's essentially garbage, there's no salvaging it.
The old ones, yeah. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Personnel report, instructional personnel, A, if I get a motion, put that before us. Motion from Mark, seconded from Mike. Any discussion? None, all in favor? Opposed, that's carried. B, support staff, getting a motion, please? Motion from Terry, seconded from Matt. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor?
Obstante.
And one abstention from Mr. Marizio. That is carried. Administrative personnel report, if I get a motion, put that before us. Motion from Mary, seconded from George. Any discussion there? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried. Okay, at this time, I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session for the purpose to, of review of the employment history of two individuals with action to follow on one employment matter. Can I get a second for that motion? Seconded from Mike. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And a motion, please, for adjournment. Motion from George, seconded from Terry. Any discussion on adjournment? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, we are adjourned.